Good evening, folks. Welcome to the Tuesday, April 13, 2021, meeting of the Glen County Mainland Planning Commission. Please join us for the invocation and pledge to the flag.
Please bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we pray to you today for your grace and your forgiveness in our shortcomings. We ask that you give us knowledge and compassion to make good decisions for our community. We thank you, Lord, for all the blessings that you've provided for Glen County and its citizens. Jesus, we pray to you because you are the great I am, and you alone can make all things happen. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you will, folks, bear with me here for a minute, and let me go over the meeting procedures for everybody so everybody understands what's going on. The planning staff presents the application request to the planning commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their requests to the planning commission. It is the responsibility of the applicants to make presentations on request and to address any conditions or factual findings which they do not agree. Public hearings. Public comments on public hearing items will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Site plans. Comments on site plans will be limited to 15 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of three minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Maurice, anything? The planning commission announcements or anything?
No.
All right. Item one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting held March 2, 2021, and the special call meeting held March 9, 2021, subject to any necessary corrections.
I make that motion. Second?
Have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Site plan approval, SP 4630, Outlot H Restaurants. Consider a site plan approval for the construction of two new restaurants at 100 and 110 Shoup Way. Parcel number 03-27466. The site is zoned Highway Commercial. Wesley Franks, Robert Civil Engineering, Agents for Callaway Land Ventures LLC and Brunswick Canal LLC owners. Mr. Postal.
Maurice Postal, Glen County Planning and Zoning. As Chairman Strickland mentioned, this is a site plan approval for the construction of two new restaurants at 100 and 110 Shoup Way. This site's at the intersection of Canal Road and Golden Isles Gateway, directly across the street from the Pepsi plant. The MPC has approved two previous site plans for this site. It approved an Outback Steakhouse site plan back in 2016, and then a Discount Tire site plan back in 2018. Of course, neither of which project was ever constructed. This is the zoning map. This is the site. Here's the Pepsi plant, here all the canal crossing stores. And this is the site plan. This bottom restaurant is a Chipotle, and this top restaurant is as yet unnamed. Here are the elevations for the Chipotle. And here are the elevations for the unnamed restaurant. And county staff are recommending approval of the application as presented.
Thank you, Maurice. Commissioners, any questions for staff? All right. All right. I'm sorry, sir.
Yep. Yeah, I don't think there's a middle lane envisioned or a turn left turn lane. I think it's the right turn lane into the restaurant, but no county engineering or public works didn't say that a middle lane or a turn lane was required.
Any other questions for staff? Will the applicant come forward?
Evening. Wesley Franks, Robert Civil Engineering, here to request approval of the site plan as presented. I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have, and I will mention the fact that the restaurant to the north, that's actually going to be a Highway 55 restaurant.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant commissioners? This is a public hearing for site plan approval. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. Hearing none, seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in support of the application? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve SP 4630 as presented.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approval of SP 4630 signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, sir. SP 4651, O'Neill Shopping Center. Consider site plan approval for the construction of a new retail shopping center at 665 Scranton Road. Parcel number 03-13590. The site is zoned Highway Commercial. Mike Sumner, Agent for Southern Cooking Incorporated, owner.
The applicant's requesting site plan approval for a new retail shopping center at 665 Scranton Road. The project site is the original location of Old Times Country Buffet at the intersection of Scranton and Golden Isles Parkway. The original Old Times restaurant on this site was demolished when the new one was constructed on the adjoining parcel back in 2019. Here's the zoning map, this is the project site. This is the new Old Times. There's the mall over here. This is the site plan showing the new, almost 13,000 square foot building. And this is what the new building's going to look like. And the county's recommending approval as presented.
Thank you, Maurice. Any questions for the staff commissioners?
Maurice?
Yes.
I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Just cause I read the Old Times.
Sure.
Me too.
Right now, there's only an entrance as you come off of the main road.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
Is there going to be an exit also there for Old Times? Are you going to have to circle around? If you come in that way, you're going to have to circle around the building and go behind Old Times to come out?
As far as I'm aware of, no, because if you look at the site plan, it actually shows, once the site is restored, it shows two-way traffic on that outer road. Right, right, to get the new site ready. But of course, you can ask the applicant that to make sure.
I agree with Commissioner Boatright, because I had lunch there today. It's hard to get in there with that dang fence where it's at, so.
I was there today too, and I didn't see you, Chairman Strickland. I wonder if some-
I actually got cussed at by a lady who told me I was going the wrong way. I was trying to get out that way. She told me I was an idiot, she had to turn around and go around the middle.
Yeah, no, I made sure to follow those signs. I didn't want to get in trouble.
All right. Maurice, any further questions?
Yes, sir.
Um, buffers, I know it's mentioned in here in number six, Maurice.
Is it, is the existing buffers, is that for like Spur 25 or were we asking them to put more?
Because like Commissioner Boatright said, it's already tight through there. Is it going to be-
I mean, technically, we have to ask for a type E buffer along the right of way.
Which would be-
Which is a 10-foot buffer.
Okay.
Right.
And is that different landscape than what's out there right now? Nowhere's, will there be an added area along the, I guess-
Well, we can work with the applicant like we did on the new Old Times site. I mean, I know there's pine trees out there now, but technically, a type E buffer requires bushes in between trees.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean.
Okay.
They didn't ask for a variance for the buffer, so.
Any further questions for staff? Will the applicant come forward, please? State your name for the record, please.
My name's Mike Sumner. I am the agent-owner for Southern Cooking.
All right, sir.
And I'm Brahm Kellerman. I'll be the general contractor for the project.
And I'm really hoping we don't have too many problems with the fried chicken going in and out. None on that.
Any, any questions for the applicants commissioners? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this site plan approval, come forward. Hearing none, seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in support of this site plan application, please come forward. Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application SP 4651 as presented.
I second that. Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, commissioners. Sir?
You will do something with that fence, move it back a little bit so people can get in and out.
Hey, he's the one.
We, we got some signage coming to help, to help direct that. Once we put it up, we've got some out there, but we got some more that's coming.
What we're going to end up having to do is end up probably pushing that out even further and make that a dedicated one lane because of the site work that has to be done on the property. So, we're gonna, right now, we're just trying to get people kind of used to when they're coming in on a daily basis on how the traffic's flowing, and then we'll tighten it back up. That way, people will understand the ins and outs of it.
All right, sir. Thank you. May I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
Would you, do you have plans on getting with the state and basically doing the same thing on Old Times? Old Times really has the right of way dressed up nice, and it really looks good. Are you planning on doing the same thing between the right of way of Spur 25 and your-
There's, there's kind of a fine line in there on what we can do on our property. Our property is very narrow when it comes up to the chain link fence. I believe the chain link fence is the, is the line.
That is correct.
So, what-
That side of the highway is just DOT.
What I would like to do, just like what we did with, with Old Times, we'd worked with the DOT. We do have a couple contacts, and then I'm trying to thin out the trees, because as y'all know, it was very thick there, and there was a lot of leaners that posed problems to our customers if something did happen. We would like to take that fence, if we can. It should be in good shape. We're going to maintain that. And that was what I was just telling him, we are going to have to ask for some type of variance because what's going to be required on that type buffer, I don't think there's going to be enough room for us to put in in between the curbing and that chain link fence. But I can assure you, by the time that we've finished, it'll be pretty close to what we've got over there at Old Times. Yes, sir. It's our family business.
Thank you very much, sir, for coming.
I hope you guys have enjoyed the new restaurant.
We have.
We, we, we struggled trying to get through it. It took us about two years, once we got everything set up, to get in. But I hope you guys enjoy it.
Yep. Great place.
Look forward, look forward to doing more business with you guys in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
No, sir. Thank you all.
Thanks, y'all. Thank you. I'll get back to you.
All right. Item number four, SP 4650, Tractor Supply Garden Center. Consider site plan approval for the construction of a new covered garden center as an addition to an existing structure at 4950 New Jessup Highway. The site is zoned Highway Commercial. Parcel number 03-22101. Kip Goodbred, EMC Engineering Agent for Air and Blue Oxen Creative. Applicant for Exchange Right NLP 30 DST owner. Yes. All right, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. Eli with Planning and Zoning. Again, this is a site plan approval for, in addition to the existing business of Tractor Supply, to add a covered greenhouse garden center style covering to the right-hand side of the existing structure. The applicant has made an official request to buffer modifications. When this site was originally constructed, it did not require buffers. Today, though, that addition would trigger those buffer requirements. But given the nature of their parking lot and how things are set up on that site, they're asking for a modification to those requirements. Here is your zoning map showing the parcel hashed in the middle. Here are your elevations with the arrows pointing out the addition and what the general appearance will be, as well as height. Here is your site plan. It's hard to see here, but the structure, the addition is in this area to the right-hand side of the building. And staff is recommending approval as presented.
Good use from a grease shop to a garden shop. So, any questions for the staff commissioners? All right. Applicant? State your name for the record, please, sir.
Kip Goodbred, EMC Engineering Agent for the owner developer.
Any questions for the applicant commissioners?
One question. Where would the entrance to the new garden supply be? Is it through the main store, or is it in that area where the traffic is directed on the side?
I'm assuming that you got to go through the main store to get in there.
The main store? Okay.
You can, okay.
I do, I do believe that they have an existing building permit to restructure some of the interior through some remodeling. I know there's an existing door that exits on the right side of the structure into where this area would be. And the elevations also do show some gates on the front, so for some potential access to the parking lot.
Yes, and, and the reason why I asked, I noticed the flow of traffic. And I was just wondering whether there was going to be a lot of foot traffic across that, you know, that area on the side of the garden center.
I can't answer to that part. Mr. Goodbred may be able to.
I, I don't know that I can answer that other than, I mean, it is a striped area, and I think that's maybe more for your loading of the bigger material that's out there now. I believe there's already, there's the fence and the gate opening and the drive-throughs there is there now, so.
Okay. Well, if the, the entrance to the garden center is going to be through the main store, I don't guess that would be as much of a concern. I was just wondering that if it was through the garden center on that side, I was just wondering whether there would be some type of speed bumps perhaps to kind of slow the traffic as it's going through there? But I guess the entrance, you said, would be through the main store?
I would assume so, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant commissioners? All right, sir. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak in opposition to this site plan application, come to the podium? Hearing none, seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in support of this application? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I, I make a motion to approve SP 4650 as presented.
I second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. SP 4640, Candlewood Suites New Hotel. Consider site plan approval for a new hotel located at 146 Gateway Center Boulevard. Parcel number 03-17006. The site is zoned Plan Development General as part of the Golden Isles Gateway Plan Development, GC 34-99. Wesley Franks, Robert Civil Engineering, Agent for Mr. Patel. Brunswick Lodging Masters LLC, applicant GVS of Georgia LLC, owner.
Good evening again. Eli, Planning and Zoning. This is the site plan approval for Candlewood Suites, a new hotel located on the previous site of the Microtel, which you may remember burned down, I believe, 2018, if I'm recalling correctly. Just some more information on buffers. As Gateway Center Boulevard is not actually a street, but a private easement, and all these surrounding parcels are commercial. There are no buffer requirements other than the type D required around the dumpster. Here is the zoning map showing the parcel hashed there with Gateway Center Boulevard. It's not showing up very well in here, but Gateway Center Boulevard accessing here in the front. the front. Here is your site plan, showing your entrance, parking, and the footprint, and here are your elevations. Staff is recommending approval.
Do you know how many rooms it's gonna be?
Eighty-five rooms.
Eighty-five, okay. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Yes, sir. Is this hotel capacity gonna be bigger than the microhotel that was there?
I don't know the exact footprint of the microhotel. The applicant may be able to answer that for you.
It's not, I'm just curious if-
I, I, I don't know the figure on what the, the previous structure was.
Any other questions for staff? Will the applicant come forward?
Good evening again. Wesley Franks, Robert Civil Engineering. Here to request approval of the site plan as presented to you. Answer your question. I don't know how big the previous hotel was, so I don't have an answer for that, but we can look into it if you need us to.
Any questions for the applicant, commissioners?
Sir, Mr. Franks, if, if indeed this new structure is larger than the microhotel was there, is there sufficient parking?
So, right now, we're asking for, it's not a variance, but it's a replacement. So, we've, we've dedicated an open space that will remain open space with a ten, a ten-spot reduction. So ultimately, we'd need 98 per the ordinance, and we've shown 88. In the ordinance requirements, if you can provide, I believe it's 430 square feet per parking space, you could have a reduction of up to 10%. So, we've got that 10% reduction shown currently on the site plan.
So, no variance is gonna be required?
No, sir, not per the ordinance.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant, commissioners? All right, sir. Once again, this is a public hearing for a site plan approval. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this site plan, please come to the podium? Hearing none, seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in support of this application? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application site plan 4640.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Eli.
Public hearings, zoning decisions. ZM 4635, 93 Benchmark Way Rezone. Request to amend an existing planned development district, ZM 1721 Ballard Plaza PD. The district is zoned at, excuse me, the district is located at 93 Benchmark Way, parcel number 03-04848. The rezoning will revise the number of required parking spaces for a proposed medical office use and will amend the district's site plan. Howard Urscham, V Energy Group LLC, applicant owner.
Maurice Postal again. Unlike a lot of the other projects we've had over the past few months, we don't have to keep this secret. This is gonna be the site of the new VA outpatient clinic for the Brunswick area. And in order to get that done, the applicant wishes to amend the PD text required off-street parking requirements. Currently, the PD text requires permitted uses to simply follow the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And the parking requirements for medical offices are actually pretty strict. They're probably the most strict parking requirements that we have. So, under the zoning ordinance, the proposed VA clinic would have to have 134 parking spaces, and the site currently has about 69. The applicant is seeking to add a provision to the PD text that would state the number of required parking spaces may be modified by providing historical data and justification, and he has done that. He's attached a letter from the VA that states that they only need 100 parking spaces at the site. And the letter also states that a similarly sized clinic in Tifton only has 85 spaces, and the VA's Macon facility, which is twice the size of this site, has 140 parking spaces. The revised PD site plan shows that they are providing 109 spaces, which is nine more than the VA requires, and it also shows that they will be building a new 1,140 square-foot canopy to the front of the existing building. And this is the zoning map. Shows the property right here behind the Vanch Corner Convenience Store. Ballard Park's over here. And this is the site plan. Here's the existing building. This is the new canopy they're gonna be building, so people won't get rained on when they drive up to the site. And these are the new parking spaces that they are gonna be developing. And we're recommending approval of the application as presented.
Thank you, Maurice. Any questions for staff, commissioners?
Mr. Postal, yeah, thank you. The canopy was not shown on the site plan that was included in our packet. We did get one today that was-
I don't know.
We sat down. So, this is the first time I've seen a canopy.
Sure.
That looks to me like it's taking up two of the parking spaces that were accounted for on the original site plan.
Right.
Is that, are we still at 109 with those?
Yes, yes, they will be providing 109. I've counted them. Did anyone else also have that on the electronic site plans they got? That they are missing the canopy? It's really the only new construction.
Any other questions for staff, commissioners? All right. Applicant?
Howard Ariston with V Energy Group. I am the engineer of record and employee for the owner. V Energy Group is a service-disabled veteran-owned small business. We're a federal contractor, and we actually own the project, leasing to the federal government for the VA outpatient clinic. Very excited to be part of the, the community. We're bringing a full-service clinic, providing all those services for our vets, and really proud for what we're gonna be bringing. And we're giving the entire site an uplift or a facelift, improving the facade of the building, including all the, the site work and landscaping, so and so forth. So, we're, we're excited to improve the area, bring in the, the clinic to help our vets out, and excited to be part of the, a permanent part of the community by owning the building.
Well, I know our vets will be glad to have a, a permanent home.
Yeah.
All right, sir. Any questions for the applicant, commissioners? All right, sir. Thank you. This is a public hearing for rezoning decision or for a zoning decision. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this zoning decision, come forward to the podium? Anyone wish, hearing none, seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of application ZM 4635.
I second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of ZM 4635 signify by raising your right hand? That is unanimous. All right, here we're coming to the biggie, folks. One y'all been waiting for. ZM 4642, 145 Bell Cut Off Road. Future land use map amendment. Request to amend the future land use map category of 10-acre portion of parcel 02-00761 at 145 Bell Cut Off Road from the low-density residential future land use map category to the high-residential future land use map category. The applicant is submitting a companion rezoning application in order to construct a proposed 72-unit multifamily project. Michael, excuse me, Marshall Davenport, Clement, GP Holding LLC, agent for Patel and Maud, owner.
All right. As with the Southern RV, Southern RV park applications that you looked at over the past couple of months, this is split into two parts, there's a future land use map amendment and a rezoning that go together. This shows the existing zoning. The star is the general area of the 10-acre site and the overall 26-acre tax parcel. This is the existing future land use map. As you can see, all this beige is the low-density residential. This red is the Wind Dixie and the Southern Hardware and the, the bank. And this is the, this red down here is the fire station. So, there's the low-density residential up against the commercial. And the comprehensive plan on page 81 states that high-density residential is appropriate for multifamily uses, such as the one proposed by the applicant. That's why he's requesting this flume amendment. And it also states that high-density residential land uses are generally appropriate in transition zones between low-density residential and commercial areas. So, this is the future land, what the future land use map would look like if approved. You'd have the low-density residential. You have the 10-acre site and high-density residential, and you would have the red commercial. And these are your possible motions for tonight. Approval of the amendment, approval of conditions, deferral, and recommending denial to the Board of Commissioners. And the applicant is here tonight.
Thank you, Maurice. Any questions for staff, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I do. Mr. Postal, forgive me. This might get a little wordy, and I apologize for that, but when we have future land use map amendments come before us that have an adjoining application, when I was chairman, I, I made the point that we needed to address each one as individuals and not confuse the two as we're talking. Unfortunately, I have a question that, that affects both of them, and so I need to ask you about this.
Sure.
And I may be misunderstanding something, but the memo for the future land use map amendment asks for an amendment from low-density residential to high-density residential.
Correct.
But the rezone application asks for an amendment, rezone from forest agricultural to medium-density residential.
Right.
Can you explain that to me?
Yeah, the categories in the comp plan and in the zoning code don't exactly match up. High-density residential, I mean, medium-density residential actually allows for pretty dense, pretty dense development. So, it would go into a high-density residential land use category even though it's called medium residential zoning. Like, the high, the high-density residential land use category includes high-density residential zoning as well as medium, as long, as, as well as MR zoning. So, flume categories can include multiple different zoning categories. They don't exactly match up every time.
Okay. So, so this was not a mistake?
No.
This was, okay.
No. No, apartment complexes go into high-density residential land use categories regardless of what kind of zoning category they're in.
Gotcha. Okay, okay. Because on the existing zoning, the map that was provided for either of the applications, there was no, there was no specific zoning shown other than the, the color grade that you had up there?
Yeah, well, this is FA, this is all FA zoning right now.
Okay.
And this, the Wind Dixie and all that is HC, except for Southern Hardware, which is also an FA zoning.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff, commissioners? Yes, sir. The property between there and the fire department, what is that as, as it is right now? Is that how, because on the other one, it looked like highway commercial, and then it's now, is that FA as well?
Yeah, no, this is all one tax parcel right now. This 10-acre site is gonna be broken out of this overall 26-acre tax parcel. They've already submitted a sub, a plat. It just hasn't gone through yet for their own separate tax parcel.
Okay.
But right now, yes, this is all one tax parcel. This is all FA. This is all in the low-density residential land use category right now.
Mr. Maurice?
Yes.
So, you tell, they don't have any fronts on Highway 17?
No, not this 10-acre site. It's only on Bell Cut Off, which we'll address in the zoning presentation.
Any other questions for staff, commissioners?
Maurice, I just have one question.
Sure.
Based on what you're saying about the whole size of the parcel.
Yes.
Do you know what the plans are for the rest of the parcel?
No, I have absolutely no idea what those plans are.
But you're saying that this is going to be a separate parcel and-
Yeah, since this, you can record plats, I mean, new parcels of three acres or greater without any kind of county review, and they've already submitted this to the courthouse for recording. Just the tax parcel hasn't been created yet for whatever reason.
For-
For this 10-acre site.
With the big star on it.
Yes.
Just that 10 acres?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff, commissioners? Will the applicant come forward? State your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Mitchell Davenport. I'm the applicant for Mr. Maudie and Mr. Patel and Maudie, and I would be the developer and owner of the, of the apartment community if we can move to the next step.
Any question?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. No, go ahead, sir, if you have something else to say.
I was just gonna say that, I guess if you zoom out a little bit, all of the commercial, I mean, it is a, is a big L around all of this. The commercial kinda surrounds this, the rural of FA zoning, and the low-density, I mean, almost like it's just gonna swallow it up. This request really follows the natural progression of zoning, and as far as the comp plan seems to follow the intent, as stated in staff's report. So, but I'm happy to answer any questions as far as the, the land use map and plans.
Commissioners, questions for the applicant?
There's no way that you can gain access for entrance and exit from Highway 17. I, I mean, I understand what you have. What was the thought process in that?
Okay. I mean, can I get access? I've had some conversations with the seller. I mean, they'll work with me. The concern being, as far as access, and I guess we're moving into kinda the next section, but if I have, there, there's two parcels there, the fire station and a different parcel that I believe has a house or another structure on it. Yes, there's a small leg in there, but Highway 17 is most likely gonna require a D cell lane. Why can't, I can't put a D cell lane in front of a fire station, really. It seems like a problematic to me, at least. Again, I'm not a traffic engineer. They tell me I can do it, but I just, to me, that seems like it could be real problematic. The thought process was Bell Cut Off is a 50-foot right-of-way. It's a public road. It's 24 feet wide, whether the right-of-way is 60 feet, 50 feet, you can appreciate that. Car, I mean, cars are gonna come and go. Because that is kind of a funky intersection, cars, traffic could come out of Bell Cut Off, make a left, come up, make a right-hand turn on 17 to head towards town, or if they're going out 17, they can come in, make a left. Either way, that gives you two options, two safe options to make right turns, which are gonna be considerably safer, have traffic control at the corner to help any other, accommodate any other direction you wanna go. And that's really, and, and I believe it's about 400 feet from the site entrance down to Highway 17 and about 900 up the other way. So, there's plenty of, of depth for stacking of cars, should that be a requirement. I mean, there's not that much traffic to need that much depth, but-
All right, folks, 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 folks. I'm gonna ask the audience to be courteous, okay?
One more question, sir.
Certainly.
Have you personally came off of Bell Cut Off Road and tried to turn the left toward the intersection of 17 and 303, let's say at 7:00 or 7:30 in the morning?
No, sir. And that's why-
All right, folks.
I understand. I mean, it's, it's a fair question. I, I, and, well, no matter, and that's why I've, I've, I selected this, so that you could go up and right-hand, excuse me, make a right-hand turn at Bell Cut, at 82, and at the stoplight, make a right-hand turn to go that way, or a left-hand turn. Again, I'm, I'm no traffic engineer, but we did try and put as much thought into this with our, with our site planners to try and find the safest, most reasonable way for, for people to get in and out, because a, a turn onto 17 is gonna be equally as, as- a, a turn onto 17 is going to be equally as, as perilous.
And Commissioner Boatright, during my rezoning presentation, I do have a whole slide on these traffic issues, which address some of these concerns.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, any other questions?
Yes, sir. Mr. Davenport, the site plan that was included with our packet is obviously a conceptual site plan.
Correct.
And you show access road alongside the, the property at the bottom of those, those three parcels. Is that, okay, there it is. So that's the only in and out that you're proposing. You're not proposing something onto Dusty Lane?
I'm not proposing Dusty Lane. My preference is, and again, should the process require us to do that, we certainly can. I prefer to have one access, one way in, one way out. It's really a security issue for me. When I have problems on my property, it's generally coming from outside of, of our community, our apartment community, and if anything I can do to help control that is generally my, in my best interest in the long run. Can we do certain, obviously, we've got plenty of frontage. We could do other access, but we try and control it as best we can in one spot.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And we're looking at 72 units?
Yes.
Which is going to be about 140 vehicles if it's at capacity. You've got figured two vehicles per...
Not necessarily. Well, in, in theory, yes. I mean, I think we are required to provide 144 parking spaces, which we show. We've got one-bedroom units, generally don't have two cars. A lot of the two-bedroom units really only is, a lot of them are one household families. If I were doing a single-family development, yeah, I, I've got a three-bedroom house. I've got two kids. I own four cars. Realistically, apartment dwellers own fewer cars.
My biggest concern is, and I live out in that area, Bell Cut Off, you wouldn't make a, what is already a problem. Southern Hardware can't accommodate their customers. They're parking out on Bell Cut Off now. So you're creating more, and like Mr. Commissioner Boatright mentioned, the only feasible way is to get towards 17 for you, and this does not do it.
Well, I can certainly access 17. The sellers agreed to, to give me an easement should we need it. We're just trying to avoid a left-hand turn onto 17. From anywhere in that area is, is not, not the safest option. And, but a valid point.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Most likely at the site plan phase, county engineering will probably require a right turn out only, so the traffic can't go towards Southern Hardware and 82.
Yeah. Well, there's been a lot of accidents out there, and, you know, safety, you know, you mentioned you wanted one way in, one way out, but that one way in on that Bell Cut Off is, and like I said, I travel it daily almost, and it's going to create, with that much volume of people moving in, it's going to create, I believe, a bigger problem. I know this isn't basically on the zoning, but we're looking at a plat that comes out on the Bell Cut Off, and it's just, it's...
And again, we, we've got options as far as Dusty Lane or, I mean, and access to 17, but...
Dusty Lane's not going to work. It is going to. This is, this is my district, this is one, and I'm very concerned about this issue. I'm not, I'm not against what you want to do, okay? But we are going to have to protect the people that live there a little better than what we do right now. That's just, that's the bottom line for me, and I'm not speaking for anybody but Neil Boatright.
And, and all of it is, is conceptual site plan. There's plenty of room to make some adjustments. We've done, as, as we get into the zoning request, I, I've tried to do the basic things to minimize any impact to the neighborhood. I'm since, I live here. I grew up here. I'm a product of Glen County schools. I want it to be a nice area. I want it to be a nice development. I want it to be something that I can use as a showpiece. And I've got a vested in, I'm a long-term owner. This isn't a, a build it, flip it, and I'm out. I'm, I'm a long-term, 30-year owner. So I want to make sure that it's, it's done well, it's done right, and it's safe for the long term. Now, if that, whether that's accessible on 17 or not.
And you're buying this piece of property? You're in the process of buying this piece of property from the town?
Yes, sir.
Contingent upon approval.
Without approval, it's worthless.
All right, commissioners, any other questions for the applicant?
I have one other question. You mentioned that, that the owners would do an easement for you to go towards 17.
Yes.
Is that something you would consider doing?
It is.
Because you talk about one way in, one way out, and another committee that I serve on for the county now, we're talking about how dangerous that is to build a subdivision that has one way in, one way out. And if you're one way in, one way out on an already busy road, it's dangerous for the people that are going to live in your, in your complex as well as for the neighbors on that road.
But, and, and you're, you're, well, I agree with your point. We can't, and we can have five entrances. I mean, I'm not opposed to one in each direction. I'm trying to be sensitive to Dusty Lane and, and anywhere else and try and find the safest, most, at least obtrusive entrance we can. And that, that's all. Whether we go to 17, it's fine with me.
All right, commissioners, any other questions? All right, sir, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this future land use map amendment, come to the podium and state your name.
I'm Stanley Edg, and I live at 181 Bell Cut Off Road. There's no way on earth that Bell's Cut Off Road can handle that kind of traffic. There ain't no way. Dusty Lane can't handle it. You can't even hardly get out on 82 right now, much less 17. There's a, there's a problem there somewhere. Georgia Power, right on one of the corners, Georgia Power's light pole is sitting down in the county ditch lined up with the culvert that the water has to run through. One of them's wrong. Their surveyor is six foot off of our property line. That I've been living here 69 years and know where the property lines are, and on one corner, they dead on the money on my sister's side, they dead on the money. And they just ain't no way that Bell's Cut Off Road can handle it. There, there's no way. And if they go out to 17 by the fire department, they're going to have to put a red light there because it goes into the school. And the traffic won't slow down on, the school buses are worse than anybody. In the county, they won't patrol the area. So I went and bought me a bunch of Guineas and turned them and let them slow the traffic down. But they, I mean, there ain't no way. There just ain't no way.
All right. Okay, folks. All right, sir, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Angela Fortner, I live at 247 Cedardale Road. That is actually on Dusty Lane. We own that property that will be the tree line between this and the housing that is being projected. I am very concerned about the traffic. There are only four houses in our cul-de-sac. I am concerned, well, actually, five, because my neighbor here. I'm concerned about the traffic. I do have rescue cats, and yes, I do keep them in my house, but I'm concerned about all the traffic. And what is this going to do to my property value? You know, our property value, we went through COVID. Everything got dropped. Everything started falling. Everything started falling. We finally hit a place where everything is starting to increase. What is this going to do to my property value? And that's something I ask you guys, just to think about, think about the kids. I have a grandson who's seven months old, and we're in a cul-de-sac, and I see more and more traffic, more and more traffic. So I just ask y'all to look, just look at that and look at what it's going to do to all of our property value, and what can we do to maybe not do this? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes. What is my name? Angela Fortner, F-O-R-T-N-E-R, at 247 Cedardale Road. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Rebecca Addison, and I live at 145 Camden Drive. And our area is already taxed with people and little resources. We need streetlights, sidewalks, and now we're proposing a multifamily place on 10 acres? We, we take our lives in our hands when we drive. If you ever go on Bell Cut Off or Dusty Road, you know that people speed on Bell Cut Off trying to get to the school because they're late with their children. We need streetlights, traffic signals, and you're proposing to tax our already taxed resources. I don't understand. And I would just like for you to vote, let it, I don't mind inexpensive multifamily areas, but in this area behind the Wind Dixie is not the place to put it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name's Linda Carter, and I live at 153 Bell Cut Off Road, which is the property right there near the exit that he's proposing. Bell Cut Off Road cannot handle any more traffic. We see it daily. And when you get to 17, you can't get left or right sometimes. And you let an accident happen on 95, and when all that traffic starts coming through, there is no place, that road's not going to handle it. And for another point, too, if it's approved, we have quest, uh, we have requested a fence be put up around it. My property is a direct access to Wind Dixie, and I don't want people walking through my yard to get Wind Dixie. So, I mean, that's some pointers, but those roads, even Dusty Lane, that hardware store, there's no place to park. And I agree with everything y'all said as far as the traffic, but it's not going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Yes, Scott Glisson, 145 Tyson Drive. I've lived, my family, we've been there since 97 in that area, and I've seen the, the growth. As a county officer and state officer, I've, and I know the plight of the traffic that we're facing now. It's a two-pronged question. I really wasn't clear when we were discussing what the medium density versus the high density and that. Was everyone clear on that? How they, that was breaking up in the numbers? That's the first aspect of rezoning. The second phase, if you've ever walked out there, I've, I jog out there, my daughter, she jogs out there, and you do take your life in your hands. I have had to give way and get to the grass to get away from people texting and driving. We need more impact with, with the county out there working that. If you're not going to, if you're going to put all those people come in it, you said it was, it's 72, correct? And the, and the density of the population you're saying is going to be approximately how many people? At full capacity, let's go 90% capacity.
He'll, he'll have a chance to rebut in just a minute. If you'll just, he's, hopefully he's writing your questions down, and he'll, he'll have a chance.
And what is the impact to the county infrastructure to support that, that big of a dwelling? And if this is the first 10 acres of a 26 total parcel, is the development, is that mindset to go forward and produce more? I'm just looking at how it's impacting all of us. You know, I want to be fair to everybody, but everybody should have a, a chance to be heard. We're stressed out there as it is now, and the speed's on 82. 82 is nothing but a raceway on Sunday afternoon. If you want to see a good grace, come on out. And if you try to get out on 17, you take your life in your hands. And that means that you're absolutely going to have to put sidewalks to get kids to schools, and how you're going to break traffic down there because in the mornings, it's, it's, you take your life in your hands. You, you can't mess up there. I just want you to consider all these things before you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yes, I'm, I'm Brenda Weems. My husband's Gary.
Might want to pull the mic down just a little bit, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
My name's Brenda Williams. My husband's Gary. We live on Dusty Lane. And this gentleman was talking about putting an exit maybe on Dusty Lane. Where are those cars going to go? They're going to go back to Cedardale, back that way, or they're going to come out the other way and go right straight to Bell Cut Off Road. That's still issue. Putting it on, or Dusty Lane is not going to solve the issue as far as traffic, not at all. And if this is approved, which I hope it's not because it's in my front yard, but I feel like there ought to be a good buffer and a fence around every single bit of it, because I, I really think it's going to depreciate our value on our homes. And we just don't, we really don't want our homes, the value to be depreciated. We've worked too darn hard, excuse my expression, to have a nice home, a nice area, and nice subdivision. And I, and I feel like that's just too many, too many units for that smaller property. I mean, there's 72 units. If there's a cover unit, that's 144. What happens if they've got a child that drives, they have family that comes to see them, they have friends that come to see them? Where else are all these, these people going to park? They have nowhere to go. And they're sure not going to park in their yards. I don't mean that ugly, but it's true. Where are they going to park? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hey, how you doing? I'm Tim Cook at 117 Camden Drive. One of the questions I have is the drainage out there. We already have a problem with drainage in that area. If you build something that big, is that's going to mess up the drainage coming from Dusty over to 17? Is a 17 coming, is it going to interrupt any of that? Because we're already having a problem out there. The other question is, we've been asking for county water and sewer. I'm assuming you're going to have county water and sewer there. Will that help us be able to get county water and sewer out towards Camden Drive and Dusty Road and all that? And those are the kind of questions. If it helps, it would be best. It would increase value of our homes. Of course, all the driving, we all know 82's always a mess, and 17. Is that going to make a big difference? Probably. But if we can figure that out, I don't think that's all the concern. I think the drainage, water, sewer, is it going to help any of the, our homeowners out that area to maybe get it? We got some county water out there, but we can't even hook onto it. It's there, but it, they're not offering it to us on Camden Drive, off of Bumgardner, things like that. Some of that stuff, I think we need to look into. If we can build something like that, increase the value of our homes. Help us get some water and sewer, things like that, drainage. I mean, that's just something something that we need to look at in the future for that. If we're going to put developments like that in, we need to up what we have now.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Elaine Boswell, and my home is 169 Bell Cut Off Road, which is directly in front of this proposed area. There is absolutely no way that that road can handle. The trucks that come down Bell Cut Off that deliver to Southern Hardware take up a good part of the street. The fire trucks and all of that business go down that road continuously. There's no way. And yes, the speeders. It is ridiculous. There is absolutely no way. I'm concerned about our land values going down, fencing. I think it's a terrible idea. And I'm totally against it. So I would like your consideration and everything every, everyone here has said. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
My name is Elmer Melison. Me and my wife live at 141 Cedardale, just above the top part of that map. We've got 14 acres there. I'm concerned in my property taxes, my value going down. I'm concerned in my property taxes, my value going down. And my question is, do you live out in that area? And if not, why don't you build a department complex in your backyard, sir? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none, seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in support of this future land use? Sir, you'll have your chance in a minute. This is, this is a public hearing right now. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Hearing none, seeing none. Public hearing portion of this future land use map amendment is closed. Sir, if you would like to address some of the concerns that the people raised, this will be your opportunity.
Remove this for a second, so I can read and talk. I, I guess, and I have a presentation that I can, I can go and address a lot of this in a lot more detail. I guess I was anticipating doing that at zoning. We, I can, I can go through it at this point if that's, if the board pleases. It, it's, but it, as far as the land use plan, what we're asking for is it's in conformance with the consolidate, with, with the comprehensive plan. It's, follows the natural progression of zoning. And it's, while I can appreciate the neighbor's concern, it's, it's overwhelming, it's emotional. Somebody tells you they're going to put apartments in your backyard, and it's, it's hard to, to be able to sit down and explain that the impact is not as big as, as you, you believe it's really going to be. And I, trust me, I, I understand.
All right, folks, this, listen.
I,
Be courteous.
We, we can agree to disagree on, on apartments and whether they're good or bad or whatnot. But as far as, if y'all like, I can go ahead and address issues.
Well, I'd rather just, if you will, just wait till we get to the rezoning part of it.
Certainly. I can do that.
That way, we need to handle it one portion at a time.
But I guess in, in short, what we're requesting, yes, it's a little confusing, the high density versus medium residential and whatnot. But the staff has noted it, it comply, it's compliant with the intent and the, I guess, the intent of the consolidated, comprehensive plan. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Davenport, thank you. Commissioners, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say a couple of things. I, I know I've bored all of my fellow commissioners in the past when it comes to these future land use map amendments. Mr. Davenport said twice, and I'm going to quote it, "This follows the natural progression of zoning." And normally, I would agree with you. I had the privilege of serving on the steering committee that designed the comprehensive plan and helped line, align the future land use map. And this proposed amendment would serve as a transition, transitional zoning from low-density residential to highway commercial, which is what Wind Dixie is. Can we go back to the, uh, to the map there? The proposed? Well, keep going, one more. There you go. I would ordinarily agree with you, Mr. Davenport, if it weren't for those three parcels right there at, on Bell's Cut Off Road. If those properties were not zoned as a single-family, I would agree with you, and I would support this, but I cannot tonight. I'm sorry.
All right, all right, folks. Commissioners, any other discussion? All right, commissioners, I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to deny ZM 4642.
I have a motion to deny ZM 4642.
I'll second that.
Have a second. All those in favor, all those in favor of denying ZM 4642, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. The application is denied. All right. So once, with that being denied, do we still go to the rezone?
Yes, because the MPC offers recommendations to the board. If this were the Board of Commissioners, yeah, it would be over.
It'd be over?
Yeah.
But, okay.
Yeah.
I understand.
Right.
All right. Go ahead, sir.
Sure. We already know most of the basic details of the project. We've seen the site plan. As we know, there are a lot of infrastructure concerns with this project. Due to traffic concerns, county engineering will require the applicant at the site plan phase to provide a traffic study. That traffic study will have to analyze the effects of the project on Bell Cut Off Road. Based on the results of that traffic study, county engineering and public works may require the applicant to make improvements to Bell Cut Off Road. County engineering also is going to require the applicant to obtain a letter from GDOT stating that no improvements will be needed to made at the intersection of Bell Cut Off and 17. If GDOT is not willing to provide that letter, then GDOT itself may require the applicant to make improvements to that intersection or contribute to the funding of improvements to that intersection. Whether that may be a traffic light or not, it's state highway, so GDOT will have to determine that. And we have sent the application to Joint Water, Sewer, and the Glen County School District, and neither indicated that this would be a strain on present, their, uh, present capacity in the area. And just as a matter of perspective, there are two other large multifamily projects within a half a mile of the site. There's Abington Woods, which is existing. And then there's Fox Creek Landing, which you approved back in December 2020, and that's going to have 80 units. And that's, uh, those two sites are about a half a mile from this site. And, uh, these are your options. We were recommending approval of the application. And of course, you're more than able to put any conditions that you want.
Thank you, Maurice. Any questions for staff commissioners?
I, I, I have a few questions.
Sure.
That's the page I'd like to look at. So the staff recommends approval of this before you talk to the Georgia Department of Transportation? You had talked to Joint Water and Sewer, and am I correct?
No, Joint Water and Sewer and the school board reviewed the application.
They've signed off on it.
They've signed off on it.
Right. Well, they didn't indicate that there are any, any capacity problems. No, we have not talked to GDOT yet. That will most likely happen at the site plan phase, if it gets to the site plan phase. Right.
Any other questions for staff commissioners? All right. Once again, this is a public hearing for a rezone, ZM 4642. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come to the podium and state your name.
My name's Karen Ducey. I live at 156 Huron Loop in the Lake subdivision, which is just outside the Dusty Lane, Baumgardner, and me. We've been here for almost 15 years. And when we have good rain, water runs downhill. And it comes from that side of 17, where Dusty Lane and Cedardale tend to take a lot of water. There's a ditch, if you will, drainage that goes from Cedardale to Baumgardner. And from Baumgardner, there's another drainage ditch that cuts across behind the Lake subdivision, through the center of the subdivision, and it goes across to 82, where there's drainage that goes, that takes that water. It rained really hard about two weeks ago. The ditch between Baumgardner and 82 through the lakes is still full to the top. Water's got to go somewhere. I'm concerned about the drainage. And I'm also concerned about sidewalks. We've got kids in schools, no sidewalks. And our county, they just said that joint sewage and water got plenty capacity. As a citizen and a taxpayer, me first! I exist. I, rather than spend connection to something that we're building new that's causing problems downstream, why don't we connect our neighborhoods to water and sewage as they exist today? I just spent $10,000 upgrading my sewage system. I would rather, instead of septic, have been on city sewage. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this rezone? Come forward.
Good evening. My name is Jack Fortner. I live at 247 Cedardale Road. I've been here about 14 years now, and I've been through the mud. Before they paved the road, it was a mud road. And that was atrocious to deal with for about two years of that, having to get the county to come out periodically and just get the road flat again so we wouldn't get stuck. A lot of us don't have four-wheel drives out there. The big thing is, when we get the big monsoon spring rains, the ditches that the young lady was speaking about before from, I live at the end of the cul-de-sac, all the way down the road, there's ditches, but they don't do anything. They don't connect, they just fill up. And I see the city come out from time to time, or the county come out from time to time and, and kind of ditch it out, but it's still there, it's still there. The water does not run anywhere. That's something that we need to look at if we're going to continue to improve on the area out there. We need to come first, like the young lady said, again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Charlotte Novak. I live in 190 Lakes Drive. As mentioned earlier, the drainage through our neighborhood, my home, oftentimes, I'm fearful of, we currently have standing water. If the drainage isn't improved, I do have concerns with this property. I also, um, the concerns with this number of cars coming into our neighborhoods, making those areas overdriven, the number of cars. I have a young child also, so I have extreme concerns about this being rezoned as high, high residential. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Rhonda Grant, and I'm a new resident at 142 Lakes Drive in the Lake subdivision. I have lived in Glen County, the city of Brunswick, all of my life. It saddens me to hear this conversation this evening. I moved out to the lakes because I am a victim of flooding in my former neighborhood, and it is a very devastating situation to live through. And at the tender age, don't let the gray hair fool you, of 61, this is not the vision I had for the second half of my life. I am very much, um, hoping that this board will deny this application. No one could tell me the devastation that flooding and loss of property value could do to the American family. And we deserve better. And I stand in solidarity with you all tonight to say that we, the people who live in this community, not St. Simon's, not Sea Island, not any of those other places. And let me just say, I grew up on St. Simon's. But I'm real. And I feel like you all are, too. And I beg of you to please give us consideration to us, the backbone of America, the hard-working people in this community who lay down everything that we have to support one another and the growth of this community. This is not right. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Yes, sir. My name is Kay Flint. I own a, my husband and I own an acre beside where he's, where they want these apartments. And if they rezone that, we already have the water problem. And it's just going to back, it's just going to flow over into our lot and just make it unusable. It's already low land out there. And if you've ever been out there, when it's, when it's really been raining, that land is, a lot of it is covered with the water, and it doesn't drain. I also live on Baumgardner Road, and I live on the corner of Baumgardner, Cedardale, where all that water runs off and heads back down Cedardale. So I would, we would all love if y'all denied this and helped us out. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening. Ryan Jakinwitz, 105 Penn Tail Court. And I do have a lot of concerns, especially, you know, mostly everybody here has already addressed it, but definitely water issue out there, flooding is a big issue. As a landscaper, we come across a lot of this. I've seen it increase over the years. I've been servicing this county for 15 years professionally, over 25 years of, of, you know, being in, in the landscaping industry. But flooding is one thing, you know, rezoning this. I do have a lot of concerns, especially with our school system. Being a father of two, taking my kids to school at Satilla Marsh in the morning, it's a nightmare, as it is. Rezoning and potentially housing, you know, just multiple family homes, you're going to increase the, the traffic. That's a bad intersection as it is. Getting out of Wind Dixie is bad already. I'm not opposed to change. I'm not opposed to increasing. As a landscaper myself, I love watching new buildings go up. That's, that's one of my favorite things to do. I love bidding on them. I love, uh, doing the installations. But I do see a, a real potential for major accidents, especially right near the, the firehouse there. And there, there's just a lot of intersections right there. Couple of people have addressed it. The, uh, once you get onto Highway 17 from, uh, either come across, that red light at 303 in the intersection of 17 and 82, when that thing changes green, people just get on it. The speed limit on that road's 55 miles an hour, and I, I think people make it a challenge to see how fast they can get to that, that limit. So there, there's a lot of room for error, rezoning that. Of course, the flooding, traffic flow, property values, I'm definitely concerned about. But definitely, please, uh, think about the families, everybody here. I think I speak for all of us when we, definitely appreciate you considering that and your decision this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wish, else wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none, seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in support of this rezone? Since I was remiss and forgot to read it, I went right into it. Let me read what ZM 4642 is. 145 Bell Cut Off Road rezone. Request to rezone a 10-acre portion of parcel 02-00761 at 145 Bell Cut Off Road from the Forest Agricultural Zoning District to the Medium Residential Zoning District. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property in order to construct a 72-unit multifamily project. Mitchell Davenport, Clement, GP Holding, LL Agent for Patel and Maude, owner. Now that I got it in the record. Would the applicant like to, uh, address any of the concerns?